...won't be with us tonight, and we are expecting Counselor Cowan to arrive shortly. First agenda item is L.A. Arts. Jim Pericles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim Pericles. I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors of L.A. Arts, and with me this evening is Gerald Walsh, who is the Manager of the Arts Agency, and
And just in time!
And just in time Darby Ray, who is another officer of the Board of Directors. And we're very grateful for the invitation from Phil to come and speak to you this evening. As you know, we have a request to the city for $25,000 grant this year, but we would like to back up a little bit, especially since there are some new members of the Council and a new mayor, and just say something about what L.A. Arts is and what we do for the cities and the citizens of this community. So L.A. Arts is the arts agency of the City of Auburn and also of the City of Lewiston. We were founded in 1973 by the two public libraries. It was known for years as LPL plus APL. We have representatives from the two libraries on our board. We're very, very fortunate to have Haley Warden representing the Auburn Public Library on our board. Our mission is to engage and inspire a vibrant community through arts and culture. What does that mean? What do we do? We take our mission to mean that we support artists in this community. We support arts and culture organizations in this community, and we provide opportunities for all the citizens of the community to experience, to create the arts, and in that way, we hope to fulfill our mission of creating a vibrant community. When we say we support local artists, we run the Art Walk once a month in the warm months, and in the Art Walk, we welcome everybody in the community to view the works of local artists, to see and hear the performances of local musicians and other performers. We hold exhibitions in our gallery at 168 Lisbon Street, and we have a folder we're going to give to each member of the Council today with some information about these events, including our upcoming exhibit of the stunning paintings of Seraphim Isolo, an artist who's come to this community from Angola. We put on concerts in our space and in outdoor spaces, and we sponsor public art, and we note with pleasure that Auburn is embarking on a public art program. We support local arts and culture organizations. We lead a consortium of something like 18 arts and culture organizations in the two cities that we call Arts and Culture L.A. This includes public institutions like the Auburn Public Library. It includes performing arts organizations like the Community Little Theater and cultural organizations like the Andrews Coggin Historical Society and Main Mill. And we organize this consortium to make the rich arts and culture opportunities in Lewiston and Auburn known to our own citizens and to the wider world. We assemble an online calendar and newsletter of the arts and culture in the community, and in that way, we advertise the offerings of all these organizations to everybody who subscribes, and the information we will give you this evening will include a QR code so that you can subscribe. We collaborate with nonprofit organizations of all kinds, often by providing the use of our beautiful gallery and meeting space to these organizations, and we now are doing this half a dozen times a month. So a wide variety of organizations that you know and respect in this community are now meeting in our space and holding events of all kinds there. We provide opportunities to all the people in our communities to experience and create in the arts. And examples include the upcoming collaboration between the two cities to create a festival event that would go on both sides of the river. We collaborate with the City of Auburn to provide content for those boards that line the River, the Auburn River Walk, and we make it our mission especially to serve the people in the community who have the most difficulty gaining access to the arts. And with that in mind, we have begun organizing workshops at the Auburn Senior Center in collaboration with the Auburn Recreation Department. Workshops where seniors can learn to make drawings, to make collage, decoupage, puppets, all kinds of wonderful things, and we're organizing trips from the Senior Center to view exhibitions at L.A. Arts, at Main Mill, at the Bates Museum, and elsewhere. And I want to turn the microphone over to Gerald now to discuss the role of the arts in community development.
Do I have to hold it?
You do.
Okay, that's fine. So this is why Jim spoke. First, I do the visuals, and Jim is much more well-spoken than I am, but on the ground, I mean, we've seen tremendous growth when entering into our new space. We used to be just down the way where Monca Studio is now, and Monca is still a functioning gallery, so I think that's actually kind of nice that we opened up a space for the arts to persist in the community. I think what I want to emphasize most is how, you know, it's hard to measure the impact of the arts in the community, but L.A. Arts is committed to the vision that the arts can inspire economic development as well. It brings people together in, I mean, it manifests in ways that are kind of magical. People see connections where they didn't see them before. It exposes new opportunities for people to develop these meaningful connections. So, I mean, I could point out specific instances. I could highlight any number of the events that we've hosted in our space. I think what I really wanted to just try to communicate was the impact that I feel on the ground every day in communication with the artists and with the organizations, even with our building owners who are investing in the building, and talk about how, you know, really what I see is tremendous growth potential. We've reached kind of an inflection point with our community, with our arts organization, and with our relationship between the two cities. I think we're all experiencing a tremendous period of growth, and I'm inspired by the opportunities for collaboration and partnership, and really looking forward to the next, you know, three to five years. I think it's going to be a really exciting period of growth for both our cities. I hope that that summarizes and kind of expresses the feeling quality of what I see as a really exciting period. Thank you.
I think one form of growth that I'd like to point to is that Gerald is our one employee, and we have outgrown his capacity to deal with the enormous outpouring of requests we have had from individuals and organizations and from the two cities to meet the arts needs of our people. And so, one of the things that we need support for is to be able to hire a second, at least a part-time second person. Do you want to distribute the folders?
Sure. Here, let me do that. He's going to do.
Okay, and And we would be happy to take questions from any of you or comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just introduce this a little bit. So this is the first of several budget discussions that the Council is, we have you first, Jim, so you're the kickoff for our budget season.
Excellent.
So, and Jim, I think last year you had requested $25,000. I believe we did $20,000 in the budget last year. The request this year is 25. 25 is what you'll see in the upcoming city manager's proposal to the city council, so it'll be going back to what the original request was for last year. So just to keep that in mind, Counsel, you might want to, as you think about your questions from your questions, it might be, you know, where does that go? That they're here to answer that and talk about how they can, how they will leverage those dollars for programmings that they do.
Are there any questions from the Council?
Thank you for, both for presenting and also for everything you do for the community. A question I had is if you could share some, either anecdotes or examples of ways that you integrate with the school systems and with our young, you know, with the young folks. I think that's obviously a really important function of what, you know, you guys probably do in the community, so curious to learn more about that.
You want to take that?
Yeah, so we partner with the Harvard Center, actually, so we work with Bates students. Every semester, we get a new intern. Sometimes over the summer, they help out with a variety of programs in addition to, you know, communications and general, like, internal management. So we even had some interns doing archiving. It turns out to be a good, you know, educational and, you know, job placement opportunities for students as they develop in their growth. We've had a number of high school students reach out wanting to do volunteer service for projects. I mean, I would say one of the ways in which we're struggling with our capacity is to meet those requests, and so we're trying to really activate a much more, like, a much more strong administrative structure to keep volunteers meaningfully engaged. But, you know, in addition to helping us with our organization, we also offer programming for youth. I mean, even just today, I had a youth reach out saying that they're interested in exploring, like, murals in the gardening programs, and so, you know, a lot of it comes down to prioritizing it, you know, meeting with the students. I have a good relationship with Matthew Pinato, actually the art teacher at, is it Edward Little?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're working towards a show. I connected him with the Atrium Gallery in the, at the Lewiston Auburn Campus, USM, talking about having a show and building towards, like, providing more opportunities for youth to show their work in the community. Lots of youth get involved in the Art Walks, showing their work in the libraries. I mean, there's really a lot that could be, that could be highlighted.
And I would add, I don't have to hold mine, but he has to hold his. Is that how it works? Cool. Anyway, I would also say that every time we have an exhibition in our gallery, almost every time, there are youth activities that come with that that are open to the whole community that we vigorously try to get families and kids to come to, and we work with after-school programs. You know, transportation is an issue for our schools, and so it's usually not possible for them to take little field trips just to our gallery. But the after-school programs, the Powell Center and other places are able to do that, and so we do work with that. We support a program every spring that happens on the Bates campus called Puddle Arts that the Powell Center is always there for. Shaun is great, and the kids are great, and I'm trying to think. There was something else. Well, certainly Art Walk stuff. We've been making a real concerted effort the last few years to make sure that at every Art Walk, there are robust, family-friendly, free, really accessible activities, whether that's just Cornhole at Dufrane Plaza, or who's the fire-breathing juggling guy? Jason Tardy, you know, that kind of thing. Tyco Drummers. But I would say, you know, the partnership with Matthew Pineda at EL is really important. We lost Shaun Rice, who was one of the really amazing art teachers that we used to partner a lot with, so we just have some relationship building to do as there's been some turnover in the arts staffing in Auburn in the schools, but we're definitely committed to that and interested in continuing to invest there.
One more thing I could add. This pilot program that we have going with the Senior Center workshops is off to such a great start that the vision for it is to expand into youth communities, so doing, whether it's after-school programs or they visit, you know, some other location, but then really trying to find the intergenerational opportunities to do work with youth and elderly in the same space. I think that's what I'm most inspired about with that program, and the conversations, preliminary conversations that I've had with teachers or with youth about that, they're just, like, really jazzed and just want to see it get going. So I think I do see that happening this year with multiple schools.
Other questions from the Council? Counselor Cowan?
Yeah, Jim, you, I'm looking at your appeal. It looks like you get about, last couple of years, you got about a third from city funding, and you mentioned you needed, you've outgrown the one FTE. Are you looking for a second full FTE? Are you looking for part-time? No, no. Actually Gerald is not quite full-time either, and so we're looking for a second part-time person who would have a focus on underserved communities. Great. I just, it's great what you do, and I just, you know, looking at the many longstanding member organizations here, I mean, they've been around for many, many, many years. I would encourage you, Gerald, and you all, I know, having sat on the CLT Board, we have data and some estimates of what the impacts are, so if you need some of those numbers from your other organizations, I imagine they could provide that stuff to you if you, if you're trying to make an appeal.
Great.
Because the second question I have is, with the growing interest in arts and the growth that are happening, do you see some good potential in growth for your individual donations or corporate donations or from foundations that, and in it, and if, I don't know whether that would at all be connected to, you know, knowing what the cities, how the cities support to that. Mm-hmm. Good. So we've been working very hard on grants from foundations, and we're very fortunate. There are a number of foundations in the state of Maine that are interested in supporting the arts these days, and even the Onion Foundation, which is located in Auburn, has been a wonderful stalwart supporter of ours, so we continue to pursue those. And it's, I think it's really important that an organization like ours has, or CLT or any of these arts organizations, has a balance. I think the individual donations are really important because it creates a buy-in, and the same thing with, with local businesses that provide sponsorships. It makes the people feel proud of the organizations that they're sponsoring and more likely to come and participate, so it's not just, you know, giving money and being done, but it creates a sense of partnership and ownership, and we want to feel owned by the community. So I think, you know, there are many, many businesses in these two cities, and we have wonderful support from some, but there are many more that we have to learn, and likewise with our lists of individuals, many people who have given generously for decades to L.A. Arts, but there are many new people in the communities, and we have to find them and welcome them.
Just really briefly, some of those sponsorships come in kind, so a good example would be like Chibo Pizza in Auburn offers pizza for some of our programming at a discounted price, so we do like kind of a price match, and then it's not really about, like, I mean, it's kind of great advertising for them. Nobody really makes any money on it, but it's, it's something that I've seen Corwin takes great pride in, you know, being able to offer his good food to the community, and the community certainly appreciates it. So there are many examples that are like that, too.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Council?
Could I add one thing? Is that all right? I know you have a lot to do. I was just, Jim mentioned public art, and I think one of the most valuable contributions that L.A. Arts is able to make is that we have a lot of experience in public art. We've gained it, gained a lot of experience, and so we can be really important thought partners as you're seeking grant support, or you might have a business owner who wants to do something, and you're not sure, like, what should you avoid, or what should you be thinking about? And so we have people at L.A. Arts who have a lot of experience in helping now municipalities navigate some of that terrain, just being a thought partner, and I think that's a really valuable thing as you're thinking about investing in arts history, culture, recreation, and entertainment. I'm staring at that one. And, you know, we very much enjoy helping with Peter Berger, the piece in Anniversary Park, the fish, and also Bud Form, and look forward to sort of offering ourselves as thought partners if that becomes relevant and desired.
Right, and we work often with Jen Bonig on events. For example, the Christmas Fair that you have, we have contributed to the planning for that. So we love to be consulted and to be brought into the things that the city is doing and provide expertise and connections in the arts.
And if you're not on the, the, let's surf for this amazing, Gerald has just taken it to new heights, this newsletter that elevates all of the arts and culture on both sides of the river. It's beautiful. It's compelling. It's the kind of thing that you would want to be linking to as you share in your own networks or through the city, but it's very attractive, and it makes me, every time I get it, I'm like, oh, there's so much to do here, even in, like, the winter. And so I really appreciate that, the elevation of kind of the art form and that, and lifting up all of the arts and culture offerings.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming out tonight and educating us on L.A. Arts. Our next agenda item is Andrews Coggin Historical Society, Curtis Jack and Wendy.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate you coming. Take care. Thanks, Gerald. All right.
Kurt, thanks for coming. We appreciate it. So just for new counselors, I believe the last time that Kurt came and presented, I think they had just made the move, or maybe the moving trucks had just really backed out of Andrews Coggin Building across the street, and so that was just underway, so it'll be great to hear a little bit of an update, just for the, for the Council again, for budget-wise. One thing that we had done when we met with the Andrews Coggin Historical Society last year, there was a one-time request that was presented. What we did as we worked with the Council, we worked that into an annual allocation that hadn't been done in the past for the Historical Society, so now it's a $10,000 allocation that's in your, that you'll see in the budget, and that's an annual request, and it's something that you'll see, and you can debate as we move forward, but Kurt, thanks for coming.
Yep, thanks, Phil. And Wendy Tardif was to join me. She had family responsibilities, so that's why Wendy isn't here. And David Chittum, who is the current president, is a newly-elected city councilman for Lewiston, and they have their meetings tonight, so he couldn't join us either. So I said, sure, I'll, I will, I would love to go speak to the folks in Auburn, and it's, just by way of introduction, my name's Curtis Jack. Call me Kurt. I was, I'm a retired teacher and principal after, like, 35 years, the first 17 of which were at the brand-new Auburn Middle School up on the hill, and it's good to look around the room, and there are some former colleagues here and some former students here in this very room, and that always makes me feel old as heck. But I guess being from a Historical Society, that's okay. Brief history of the Historical Society, as you may or may not know, we started in 1923, so we are in our 100th year, most of which was located at the County Courthouse on the third floor. Two, if not three years, we were over here. We, for some reason, back, back in the day, they moved over to City Hall for, I think it was almost three years, and then back they went and they stayed there. And as Phil said, we, we have moved this past, starting in January of '22, we began the move, and I don't do this very often, but I'm going to say the move, because it was a physical move. We had over 10,000 items that needed to be moved, and some of them you may have seen, either live or on TV, were moved by Cody Crane out the third floor of the courthouse window, and our, my update to you is that everything is physically moved. Everything is out of the courthouse now, and everything is in our location at 93 Lisbon Street. And part of the complication of the move was not just physically moving it, but doing it in the way Historical Society should, in an organized way, so that we know what we have, and that we know where it was and where it is, and we've done a ton of work in terms of being careful in our cataloging and careful in the moving, and I'll talk more about that in a couple of minutes. But the move didn't just include physically moving. The move meant organizationally as well. Our mission is to gather, preserve, and share the historical treasures from Andrews Coggin County, and if you look around the county, there are other Historical Societies, mine at Mechanic Falls, Paul in Livermore, and so forth. There are 15 towns and cities, municipalities in Andrews Coggin County, and most of them have some form of a Historical Society, except for Lewiston and Auburn. We are really the de facto Historical Society for the Twin Cities, and as such, we actually have a number of locations to help us with our mission of sharing and preserving, and we work very closely with the city. As of course you probably know, we have the West Auburn Schoolhouse that we maintain, and several of our, our board members are school marm's, and we have a number of schools that come in to experience, to experience what school would be like in a typical day in the 1850s. We also have the Night House, which we lease from you folks for a dollar a year, and we provide tours and we provide experiences there, generally family-oriented experiences. And until recently, of course, we had the Shoe Shop that was right next to it, which was one of the unfortunate events of arson this, this past summer. So our physical move is also an organizational move in that we are trying, we're working very hard and successfully to reach more folks. Parking wasn't great at the courthouse. Accessibility wasn't great at the courthouse, so we were looking for a more accessible, more easily accessed in other ways location, and it's working. One of the updates I'll give you is that not only are we 100% moved, we are basically, we are open consistently four days a week now. We were feeling our way through to a seven-day-a-week opening, and as we talked about, okay, what day should we be open, as we try this, we've done kind of a variety of things. We have a couple of mornings during the week that we're open. We have an afternoon during the week that we're open, and Saturday, we're open from 12 to 4. Eventually, I believe, as I said, we'll be open seven days a week. We want to make sure that families can come to us, and for example, my grandchildren, who don't live far from me, but they go to the library every Saturday morning, the Lewiston Public Library every Saturday morning, and our goal is for folks that go to the, families that go to the Auburn or the Lewiston Public Library just naturally come over to see us next and see the, the history of the town they live in. So in terms of where, update of where we're going and how we're progressing, like many of you and this community, as well as across the river, the wind and rain storms were not our friends. We, we had quite a across the river, the wind and rain storms were not our friends. We, we had quite a bit of damage, as a matter of fact, requiring a brand new roof from the first wind and rain storm. And then we were in the process of having that done the weekend that the second major wind and rain storm occurred. So that, that has been a little bit of a setback. But in here, I'll give a real shout out to Damon Refrigeration and Hanel Brothers. They really stepped up and helped us out an awful lot. And I can report happily that that damage has been repaired. We still have cosmetic damage inside sheet rock that needs to be repaired, but we have an estimate for that and that should be done soon. We're looking at a, a full opening come May, beginning of June. And we've been working like, at this, like you said, Phil, for two solid years now. The other thing, the other aspect that I'll talk about is when we came to you for our ask, and, and you were, you gave us your generous gift, and the wonderful news that we were going to become part of the budget, it really provided a solid foundation for us to get started on our work. And it allowed us to do a number of things, including talking with the other municipalities. As a matter of fact, I remember, I was sitting in front of the Andrews Coggin County Commissioners, and when I was able to say that Auburn has, it seemed to carry some weight from the, with them. So I really thank you for that. That was quite helpful. And it also has, it allowed us with our firm footing, we now have an army of volunteers over, over at the Historical Society, doing everything from sweeping up, dusting, cleaning, to going through, touching every single item in our archives, and every single item in our library. We knew we had a bunch of stuff. It was kind of organized, sorta. And now it is very organized. And we're continuing that work. Wendy Tardif brought her experience from the Dempsey Center over and helped us organize that. And so that's, that's been very helpful. We, we also have one person who works for us. We aren't to the point where we can really afford an executive director. At some point, we would like to be able to do that. What we have now is an administrator, who's basically the captain on deck. We have somebody that's there, she's there six days a week. And she's there answering the phones, answering the mail, responding to the multitudinous requests for research and genealogy assistance. For me, the bottom line is, we are really starting to do what we were intended to do. And we could not do it without the support of the communities and, and Auburn included in that. So I guess the, the update is that we're over there, where we had a little, we had a little bump with the storms, but we've recovered from that. And we are on our way to, to being something that we can all be proud of, if we're not already. And I just want to echo what, what Jim and his compatriot said. We work closely with them, and they've been a big help to us as well. We enjoy working with them. And be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from the council? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You briefly touched on the, the fire over at their shoe building. How much of it was damaged? How much was able to be salvaged? And what is it going to take? Are you going to have it replaced?
Well, when you say, when you say it, there's really two things. The contents, which were basically ours, and the building itself, which unless I'm mistaken, belongs to the city. And so I can tell you what's going to happen with, what's happening with the contents. And then I'd have to turn to Phil for what the city's doing with the actual building. With the contents were rel, the contents were either totally destroyed, or they're okay. And quite, I'm pleased to announce that almost nothing was destroyed. The way the fire was, stuff smells, but it kind of did anyway. You know, it's old. And I have one of those Shelter Logic, the president lives just up the road from me, on the outskirts of Lewiston. And so I, I purchased one of those Shelter Logic tents, and he put it up on his property. And I used my pickup truck and we're moving everything there until a final, final dispensation has been made about the actual building itself. But the artifacts fundamentally weren't lost. The building itself was a total loss, is my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's some insurance process that took place on that. I can get you a more detailed report later on exactly what was, what was paid out by the insurance. I believe the case just got, just closed with the individual being convicted. So, but I can get you some more details on it.
And if I could just add one more thing about fundraising, it was, I'm, I'm a retired public educator. So this was fundraising, other than like cookie sales and stuff, was new to me. So this whole new world. But we, we set ourselves a lofty goal on the campaign for growth of $750,000. And we're on track. As a matter of fact, I just, we just had our, a fundraising, I'm the treasurer of the society now, former president, and also I run the fundraising team. And we just had our last meeting and we've, we've raised $315,000 up to this point. None, not a lot of which is regular budget line funding like this is. And we're looking for, it's just such a blessing to know as we plan our budget, that we can at least count on this amount of money, however big or small it is, to, to form the nucleus of what we're trying to do. And we do have a new and a pretty exciting initiative coming up as part of this whole campaign, is we have a nine foot by three foot mural of the Andrews Coggin River. And all of the towns of the Andrews Coggin River are on it. And there's places for people to put their family names on this, in a nice bronze nameplate that'll go on it. For, for a donation of 5,000 or more, the name, your name will go on it. And your, whatever information about your family you would like will be in our archives. So when your children, grandchildren, great grandchildren come to town, that'll be there. And we already have close to 10 families that are interested in doing that. So we're, as I said, with my fundraising hat on and being new to this, that just made my eyes pop right open. It's, it's pretty exciting. And when that, we do have some information about that. I'd love to send that over to the council when, when we get it. So you guys can be in the loop on that.
Any other questions by the council? No? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
The next item is Auburn-Lewiston Airport. Jonathan Levanti, Transportation Director.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jonathan Levanti, Transportation Director for the City of Auburn and Board Chair of the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport. There was quite a bit of information in the packet that I sent along, but figured it might be helpful for you folks and for the public to kind of go through some of the highlights with a quick slide deck and then field any questions that you might, you might have for me. As I've been reminded a few times, there's plenty, there's plenty of work to be done at the airport. There's a lot that we need to organize and improve upon still. But reflecting on, a bit on where we were a year ago this month, I thought it would be good to kind of highlight that we're at least trending in the right direction. So landing fees, which is a fee that we charge to aircraft over 4,000 pounds that land at the airport, were up 36% over this time last year. Our fuel sales in dollars are up 22% over last year. Revenue generated from tie downs, or from hangars, so either transient aircraft visiting that may stay for an extended period, or aircraft that are based, that revenue is up 94% year over year. Sale of assets, that's a big number. You know, what's in that number is us kind of untangling ourselves from the Elite Airways lease. And the legal process and wrangling, not only with Elite, but with the FAA and the financiers of the aircraft that Elite used, how we went about getting access to those assets to then be able to monetize them, to fill gaps. So there's a lot of, lot of, a lot of time went into that. On the expense side, so revenue's up, where are expenses through seven months, they're down 9%. And the obvious question then is, well, if we're down, if we went from 12 to 13 staff members at the airport to three staff members at the airport, shouldn't that number be bigger? Well, when you pull out our fuel purchases, so we obviously buy fuel in bulk, and then we sell it. So depending on that timing, when you back out fuel, our expenses are actually down 28% through the first seven months. So just for, just a snapshot, these numbers aren't all sustainable, which is a key element that I'll talk about it when we get into the operating subsidy request, is we're trying to fix the business and then have a business plan and a business model that we can be more sustainable. So we're not going on this roller coaster ride out at the airport every couple of years. The highlight for you, some of the initiatives that, that we have earmarked for 2025, some are underway now, and will continue through the next fiscal year. The airport has not updated its master plan since 2006. That process is underway with a consultant, McFarland-Johnson. That's a critical element to building our new capital improvement plan, which is where we direct our FAA and DOT funds, in addition to any requests for local dollars. And the intent is to develop a wraparound business plan to complement that capital program and that master plan. Pavement condition assessment has not been done since 2008. And there really wasn't a pavement management program developed after the last report was given to the airport in 2018. That will be a key element to make sure we're meeting our FAA obligations to maintain pavement at the airport. The FAA does not give us enough money to maintain the pavement. But by taking an FAA grant, we commit ourselves to properly maintaining all that pavement with local funds if needed. The previous manager did invite the FAA in to do a land use compliance inspection. They dropped that report to us about three months after he left. And there's a series of corrective actions that we're working through, both with tenants, with some of our lease agreements and otherwise. That, that is, is taking some time. And we hope to have all of those cured by, by the end of fiscal '25. You'll see in the capital program, we did get an earmark for $1.6 million. Getting that project up off the ground and construction started is a goal for the next fiscal year. Both cities did fund the installation of self-serve 100 low lead or avgas. We've permitted that. It's been designed and engineered, and that will be constructed during this calendar year. And that will hopefully help to drive additional sales around the clock, not just when we're staffing the airport. We have private hangar development interest. Fielding Properties LLC, the Fielding Propane family, the board has authorized me to negotiate a public-private partnership. We'll invest with them to develop a, a plan and permit for private hangar sites. They will then secure the first to build the new box hangar. And then we'll have three shovel-ready, permit-ready sites for additional development. We need a tenant for Hangar Five. That's the 27,000 square foot hangar that was built for, purpose-built for Lufthansa, that we're generating some revenue, but is a very expensive building that's sort of outsized for what we have for traffic at that airport. And there is a loan that's due to both cities. And we're obviously going to finish this year very strong financially, in part because of the Elite asset sale. And we'll be working with the board to develop a robust fund balance policy, as well as reviewing the, the use of the land fund or capital reserve fund, to try to avoid some of the, the hiccups that played out over the last couple of years with use of those resources and limited ability at times to make payments on capital projects. So into the, into the meat and potatoes, operations expenses. We're continuing to review both the management needs and airport staffing. I mentioned, we've made some big number shifts, going from, you know, 12 to 13 employees in an org chart, down to, down to three or four. We've been leveraging some contract partnerships to make sure we can deliver the core mission of safety of flight and, and access to aviation services, without creating full-time equivalents until we know we need that. That's still underway. Wage scale adjustments, you can't pay someone off the street $16, $17 an hour and expect them to fuel jets or to plow your runway. So as we downsized staff and rooted out HR issues, when we went to post positions, those wage scales were right-sized to, in essence, compete with what Lewiston and Auburn Public Works might seek in equipment operators. So we went to those wage scales. I talked with both PW directors, and we set our wages to be competitive. And ideally, those, those folks that we have on staff become peers to both Public Works departments, and perhaps at, at times able to fill in and support each other in key roles. And because we've downsized, some of those were layoffs, not all terminations for HR issues. We do have an unemployment liability that's hanging out there for that 18-month window, and we need to budget for that. There's an increase in professional development year over year, with a big focus with new team members, and to elevate the level of credentialing we'll have for team members to improve our professionalism. And I, I expect there'll be some continued tweaks, and there'll be other categories. I'll mention this. Historically, the airport would quote-unquote "close" during a winter storm event, and then at the end of the storm would deploy folks to plow and then reopen the airport. We lose business that way. Jets that might be coming in will divert to Portland, they'll go to other airports. Liflight could have operational challenges. Wiggins Airways, who flies for UPS, could have operational challenges. So where we're doing better financially this year, we, you know, I made the decision for us to push to be open. That we'll fund the overtime shifts, we'll plow with the storm, to make sure we're available for landing, obviously by posting, you know, traction and other conditions, and then more quickly sort of mop up after the storm. I think it's going to be three to five years of sustained doing that, for folks that schedule charters or otherwise, to see us as a viable place to be. But we're getting good feedback from customers, both base customers and those that come in. But we're, in ways we hadn't before, every storm's getting documented with equipment use, fuel consumption, hours of operation, which staff members were involved. So we can actually start to track the way, you know, both cities PWs do. So every year you can budget, assuming a certain number of storms. You would assume, you know, the airport's been around almost, well, the airport itself's been around 90 years, but as, as its current entity's been around, you know, 45 years, you'd think there'd be a paper trail, and it just unfortunately was not. On the maintenance side, you know, a big part of what, what you're going to see as we get to our final budget, before the start of the new fiscal year, is as we tighten up where some of the numbers are, you're not going to see total expenses go down. We're going to make a shift to categories that have been underinvested in. Airfield maintenance is where our, our fence maintenance program is. You could look at PW's fence repair numbers, you know, we've got a lot of fence. It's like, like four miles of street perimeter. Most of that's fenced at the airport. The airport itself is obviously entirely closed and fencing. We've got some areas where there's a foot, two foot, two and a half foot, three foot gaps, but from the bottom of the fence to the ground where coyotes, deer have burrowed, found their way in. We need to make sure that wildlife are excluded from the airport. And that's going to make it, be a sustained investment over time. We're not going to propose one big fencing project. But we're going to start putting money annually into getting at segments. Either some we can do on our own, some will contract, but that's going to be a big piece. Same with building and vehicle maintenance, same with radio equipment. A lot of deferred maintenance. I wish I had a full handle on it and had a shiny five-year CIP. We're committed to working through every system and getting that in a better place as part of the master plan. Utilities are expensive. Fortunately, we found two tenants for two of our hangars to take master leases. So what was called the FBO hangar, and what we call the white hangar, both have tenants leasing the entire building, triple net lease. So we're able to move those utility costs, in particular natural gas and electric, to those tenants, which helps. and in particular, natural gas and electric, to those tenants, which helps. But Hangar Five, with its radiant floor heat, is extremely expensive. We're running three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars a month during the winter to heat that, and that's at, at fifty degrees. Anyone who's come out to the terminal, and we've got a couple of board members who come out for meetings, and they have, they keep their jackets on, I think I got a request last meeting from one board member to turn the heat on an hour before the meeting. So we're, we're, we're doing what we can to manage utilities. The FBO, which is where we deliver our, our flight line services, our fueling, we're still targeting having a contractual partnership to help fill staffing there, while our operations, airport staff will be cross-trained. Our ability to, you know, leverage Durigo Aerospace Solutions, who used to run Twitchell's Airport, to have them assist with filling shifts and elevating customer service has made a huge, huge difference at the airport and connecting with pilots. A key part of, of staffing overall, though, is that, a big part of the fix was not having four to five airport employees touching accounts receivable or accounts payable. So we've streamlined that, mostly all running through me right now and then into partners in Auburn Hall. So, you know, Kelsey's team down in finance, they've done a huge lift, helping us clean up the chart of accounts, helping us clean up an invoicing system that would make accounts receivable and aging accounts receivable accountable, that we actually can see what's real there and we're not double-counting revenue. There's been a huge lean from them, I think it'll be a little bit less time once we've got a full system in place, but none of that right now is appearing in the airport budget, and it's going to be part of making sure that if a joint agency is consuming staff in Auburn, it should compensate Auburn for that, that consumption, and we can be transparent about that. Revenues, rental fees, I'll, I'll try to go quickly through some of these. I much, I, I prefer to budget revenues conservatively and then see the budget outperform, so we're not going to see any stretch, stretches with revenue. The board did vote last year to arbitrarily increase rental income by fifty thousand, with an interest to hire an airport manager come January one. There was no tenant for that fifty thousand dollars, it never materialized, the board never posted an airport manager position. I've continued to, to play the role I'm, I'm in now. I'm assuming for next year, we don't have a master tenant for Hangar Five. It would be phenomenal if we got one, it would be a six-figure shift in the budget, but let's, I don't want to budget for that, and then we end up scrambling with a hole. We'll keep trying to generate revenue, we'll keep hunting for a tenant, but we're not going to assume that. Christian Hill, which is an off-airport, airport-owned property at the southern end of the airport, it's on the approach to runway four, is leased to Auburn Aggregates. It feeds eight of their con, eight of their concrete plants. I just heard they were going to be buying up in Fairfield Dragons Cement Plant up there, so it'd be nine concrete plants. We get, every time they blast up there, we get a payment for the material that's broken free. It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year right now, that's what I'm putting as a placeholder, but it'll be closer to the end of the year when we get that number. And the simulator, which was purchased a year and a half ago, is getting active use now, when the flight school relocated from the Portland Jet Port, we built into their lease agreement that they could manage the access to the simulator, and they would pay us twenty dollars per hour used on the simulator, which helps pay for the maintenance program we signed up for and adds a little bit to our operating budget. So it's a good tool, and it's getting used by students. On the non-operations revenue, you know, we are requesting a flat subsidy for this year, so this will be the third year in a row that the airport asks each city as an airport sponsor for two hundred and five thousand dollars. So I wanted, I put together just a quick chart of the actual subsidy from each city and then adjusting that for inflation. So this is showing, and it's adjusted to December of twenty-three dollars, that's from the Bureau of Labor Statistics Inflation Calculator. So we're, 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 we're down slash flat. Obviously, what inflation did over the last couple of years, you're seeing it in the budget at home, you're seeing it in the budget here, wages, materials, you name it. So I'd like to say flat is the, is the new down, but we, we want to make sure that we're predictable. We don't, I don't want to have the airport coming to either city and saying, well, this year it's two fifty and next year it's one fifty. And there's a, there's a dynamic about where we end up with this, and that's to develop a business plan and for the board to talk with both cities to figure out, what's the future look like if we become a little more sustainable? You know, my preference would be, at some point, we stop asking for capital, and because the airport has bonding authority, and if we manage our fund balance, can we start to feed the beast by having a consistent operating subsidy? And then when we perform well, if we're going to finance, it's built into the operating budget, that, that portion of, of retiring debt service. So it's one package, it's not, well, this year we're going to ask for half a million dollars, the next year we're going to ask for three quarters of a million in capital, to try to make it more predictable. What that looks like, once we get through developing the next master plan, I'm not sure yet, we're going to go through the process and, and see what that looks like, but that's where my bias would be, is we start to simplify where the cities each play a role financially. We also still have, so the, the deal we struck with the two jets that we took title to from the Los Angeles Finance Company, those jets were torn down, and the parts were sent to a warehouse in Miami where we make about seventy cents on the dollar. So I've put a placeholder of about seventy-five thousand dollars in additional part sales for the next fiscal year. I think that's conservative as well. I'd like to see that number get into the six figures, but there's a, when you see sale of Hangar Five assets in the budget, that's the source of that. On the, the FBO or the, the flight line services revenue, I'm assuming flat fuel sales year over year. There's a number of reasons to believe that is overly conservative, but again, not knowing what the economy might hold, betting on balancing a budget with the spread that we make on fuel sales is, is a little too risky. But we do provide the fuel that sold at the Twitchell Seaplane Base, the flight school that relocated, consumed about as much fuel in Portland last year as the Seaplane Base sold, so there's reason to believe that would be up, and obviously, just increased activity with more based aircraft and the jet activity. We are doing a fee structure review, I've met with our fuel provider, we're looking at some comparable airports and how they set up their fee structures. My hope is, by the March or April board meeting, to bring some concepts to the airport board to make sure we're balancing our fee structure. Often we'll have jets come in, they'll pay our landing fee, we'll have gone through coordination with their, their, their charter operators, we may marshal them into parking, we may greet passengers, and we'll get a forty-dollar landing fee. There's a lot of overhead that goes into supporting the flight line side of those arrivals that other airports would charge, for example, a ramp fee. So the landing fee goes to support airport infrastructure, typically your ramp fee is the, kind of the personnel that are out there managing the logistics of getting that aircraft, you know, to where it needs to be parked and getting passengers off. So we're going to revisit that to make sure we're, make sure everyone carries their, their fair share of operating the airport. And again, tie-down and hangar fees in flight line services, trying to get into more predictable cadence of what that business looks like and not, not trying to assume that the growth continues at the rate that we're on. For capital projects, there's, there's four projects listed there that I, I put as highest priority for us to put forward. One is the earmark hangar, there's one point six million dollars in the earmark. The airport had not been consuming its FAA funds as quickly as those were being provided, in particular with the bipartisan infrastructure law. So we're able to aggregate that bipartisan infrastructure law funding with the earmark to deliver that hangar but for the local share. So to each city, each city would contribute about two and a half percent or two and a half percent of that total project, or sixty-eight, seven fifty. If, if we were to attempt to build a hangar on our own and spend that two point seven five, there would be no payback period, or it would be beyond all of our lives, and it would be something Historical Society might tell about, talk about in a hundred years. But to be able to have each city spend about seventy thousand dollars, and the moment that facility opens, that we could generate another forty to fifty thousand a year in airport revenue, is significant, definitely worth the investment because of the leverage with the federal funds. Annual pavement management, I mentioned earlier, the airport has not had a pavement management program. Do, do, main DOT and FAA do annual inspections. We have areas of pavement that need attention, and I want to make sure that we can scope and get some of those repairs done, to make a good faith effort and show both agencies that we are paying attention to pavement. In the operating budget, there'll be some additional crack filling and some smaller pavement marking, but we need to get a little more aggressive in maintaining our, our infrastructure. Firefighting foam trailer, there is no capability locally to respond to a fuel-involved fire, whether it's a heating oil tanker on Center Street or Alfred Ford Parkway, or some sort of aircraft crash inside or outside of the fence. It's something that has been discussed. The board's suggestion, it came from the city manager, is to continue moving that project in the CIP process, but to work to engage with both chiefs, with the county EMA, to see if we can identify some federal funds for that. So that, that's still our intention, is to try to find non-local dollars for that capability, but it, it has come up, obviously with two presidential visits going over security and response at the airport. We just, we don't have the capabilities locally, we would have to wait for South Portland to respond. And then risk management initiatives, there's a number of technology upgrades, you know, we, we invested this year in getting fiber back to the airport, we're back on the city network, but improving gate operability, fuel system accountability, there's a number of systems that really are dated there. We have gates onto the airfield that regularly freeze or lock open, that need to go and be reset. If a tenant were to come in in the evening and they not noticed that the gate did not close behind them, you know, we run a real risk of a runway incursion, a vehicle driving down Hotel Road, they turn left on White Hangar Drive, and next thing you know, could be driving right down a runway. Those are things that, that could lead the FAA to shut down the airport. So we've got a lot of control or another upgrades that we want to start making, and to be able to chip away at that, you know, one gate opener at a time. So I've taken quite a bit of time working through all that, I appreciate your patience. You know, there's a whole, a whole nother presentation we could give, sort of, you know, Airport 101 and the role of the sponsors, the two cities. We could, we could save that for, for another day, but certainly, a snapshot as to what the business might look like next year. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from the council? Yeah, thank you very much, I'm very interested in seeing the master plan development. You know, there's been a lot of putting your finger in the dyke in the last year to, to stop the leaks. I think there's a lot of potential there and very interested in see what you and the board are going to be planning for the next few years and, and how we get there.
Awesome. Thank you.
The next agenda item is assessing update, Karen Skaman and Joe St. Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So we're not here for the budget, we're here to give you just some information and some updates. We've been very busy down in the assessing department. We have sent out a lot of mailings lately, and so I would like to explain to you, Joe and I would like to explain to you why we did it and what the purpose of it was. So the first one we're going to talk about are the income and expense statements. We sent those out, when did we send those out? To all of the multi-units, two units and up throughout the city. This was for the purpose of gaining income and expense information for valuation purposes. So, as assessors, we must consider market, cost, and income when we are putting a value on properties. We have the market, we, we have sales that we review monthly, we have the cost, the cost is set up in our Patriot CAMA system, so we have that. What we don't have is accurate and up-to-date income and expense information. We want to use that, well, first let me tell you, we asked homeowners, property and property owners, how many rental units do you have? How many are rented? What is the monthly rent? How many bedrooms are in these rental units? How old is your building? That makes a difference. Things like that, and then we asked them, what are your expenses? What's your building maintenance? What are your utility bills? What are your capital expenses? Do you have a budget for new roofs, boilers, things like that? So what we do with this information is, we are trying to derive market data. We're not using this information for individual buildings. For instance, someone has given us their income and expenses on a particular building. We're not taking that information and applying it per se to that particular building with those particular income and expenses. What we're doing is gathering all of this information, then we're going to break it down, we're going to analyze it. Probably, and we haven't started analyzing yet, but probably, our, our goal is to, here's the income and expense for two to four units, here's the income and expense for five to nine units, here's the income and expense for nine and up, because we know that rents can fluctuate depending on the size of the building. Obviously, expenses are going to fluctuate depending on the size of the building, they're going to depend on the age of the building, they're going to depend possibly on the area in the city where these are located, where these rental units are located. So it's going to take a lot of work to break all of this information down, analyze it, then we're going to, the goal is to say, okay, now we have a market or an economic rent that we can then apply to buildings of that size. When, when an appraiser is doing an appraisal on a property, they are not only using actuals, they're also using an economic or a market. In mass appraisal, we're using a market. We're not taking that actual because we want to apply across the board the same rent, the same expenses, and we do it in a ratio form. We say, okay, for a two to four unit, based on what we have, what, what they have provided us, property owners have provided us, maybe a two to four unit has a fifty percent ratio, expense ratio. That's going to be our, our economic or market ratio that we're going to apply to all of those two to four units. Those aren't actuals for everybody, obviously, some, some properties are going to have a higher ratio, but that's how we're going to do it, that's why we have asked for this We, we need to make sure that our market and our cost and our income are all supporting each other. If one is out of whack, then something's wrong. We know the market is there, I mean, we have our market data, you really can't argue with market data. Our cost, that's questionable because our cost tables are old, so that might be off. But if we can have all of this income data and we can apply it to these buildings, and it supports the market data, now we know that, okay, these values are somewhat correct because we have supporting evidence. So, we've had tremendous amount of phone calls, people get nervous when we ask for income and expense data, we have fielded them, we've, most people understand the purpose once it's explained. We've had pretty good response, we sent out a little, almost eleven hundred, correct? Almost eleven hundred, now that's owners, that's not properties, that's owners. Some of these owners own multiple buildings. We have one owner in the city, it's a, an LLC, but it owns forty-four apartment buildings. So, we're going to collect a lot of data from them. But we sent out almost eleven hundred of these letters, we sent them out in February, we have received about a hundred and fifty back that are filled out completely, from all sizes, which is really good, that's what we want. We have a lot that came back because our addresses were incorrect, so that's good, that's one byproduct of this, we're correcting mailing addresses, so that's a good thing. Another is, we are learning that we have a lot of apartments in this municipality that are not rented. Homeowners choose not to rent their apartments, they are leaving them vacant, they have left them vacant for years and years and years. Is that going to be helpful to anybody? Possibly, maybe there's some program in the city... Maybe there's some program in the city to connect with some of these vacant apartment rentals and work with homeowners if they're willing to rent them. I don't know. But when this whole project is done, we will have a list of, from the information that we receive, we will have a list of the vacant apartments in the city and where they are. And that's, I think that's going to be good data that we didn't really expect to, to get from this project. So, do you have anything to add to that at all?
I do think there was a lot of concern expressed by some, some property owners that, and I think it was confusion over what it is we were asking for. I, I think there was an assumption that we were asking for income information, you know, their, their total income information, when really we were just asking for routine income and expense concerning the buildings. And, and that's really all we were asking for. Like Karen said, we do three approaches to value. We have to reconcile those approaches, and we, we can't do the income approach without the income data. So that's really all we're doing, is we're asking for the income data in, in this instance.
And as an aside, in the conversations that we've had with people, like Joe said, it, it makes people nervous to provide this information. It can be confidential. All they have to do is market confidential, which we have told them, and then we can keep it as such. We'll still use the data we explained, but it will be confidential information. We also have a few people who are really not comfortable at all providing the information. This is a request. This is not mandatory. It's a request that we have put out to help us do our job. We did send it, pursue it to 706A, which means that by statute, someone who does not provide the information may not be able to appeal their assessment. But, that being said, if someone, and we have spoken to a few people who are very uncomfortable providing the information, don't provide it. It's okay. We didn't expect to get 1,100 responses back. We were talking about it today, and if we could get 15 or 20%, it gives us more than enough data to do what we need to do with the information. And we're grateful to anyone who will provide it so that we can do what we need to do. So that's the income and expense letter that I'm sure that you've all heard about already.
Any questions from the council regarding the income expense letter? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When was this ever done? I don't remember it in the 20-ish years I've been on the council.
You are correct. We have not done it. We have been relying on data that we get from publications for Northeast rental data and expense ratios. We have also been depending on HUD information, Housing Authority information. We've had many, many, many years. This is a huge project. It really, really is. When you think that you're going to get in maybe 150, 200 responses from owners, and again, those owners may own more than one property, and to sit down and analyze all that data and determine how you're going to use it, frankly, a staff of two can't do that. And so for the past nine years, we have not done it because we can ask for the information, but then we can't use it because we don't have the time to analyze it. So you are absolutely correct that this has not been done. But now that we have the staff, and we have a very capable staff, then we will be able to do what we should have been doing all along.
And can I add that we, we haven't done it to this scale, but actually, we have asked for rents from business personal property owners, people who own multiple properties. We actually have been surveying this information, have, have a file on that. But it wasn't, it wasn't seen as the complete body of work to make a, you know, a, a more informed decision. So this is, this is a project that we undertook, and it's not uncommon for municipalities to seek this data.
Council Calm?
Just a quick follow-up. Is it your thought you'd like to be able to do this on some regular cadence?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, it should be done yearly. Should be. Yep.
Council Wythe?
Thank you both for coming in and, and speaking about this. I know there's a lot of concerns in the community about it, but thank you for coming in. And I know you talked a lot about the apartment building side of this, but I also see the farm side of this within it. Is it the same exact process with the farms?
We're going to get to that just a minute.
Okay, sorry.
I have a list.
I didn't, okay, good. I just didn't know if it was, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we covered the farm piece too, because that's a very important piece.
Yes.
Council Walker?
Thank you. I'd just like to make the comment. I know you've heard a lot of different things said, and so have we as councilors. I, I'd like to suggest that the next time you do a mailing like this, you would be here doing this before the mailing goes out, because I've talked with better than 50 people, and them 50 people said they will not do it because, number one, they thought you were trying to find out what they make, what they earn, what they rent their property for was one of their other things, and they felt that that was really none of your business. And they think that you're looking, you know, to get into their lives more than you need to be. So coming here tonight, doing this, is great, and I think this should have been done before you mailed anything out.
And that's, that's a good point.
Council Wything?
Just a quick question. How much of a breakdown you do between buildings? Because there's a big difference. I mean, I remember Barker Mill being this hugely efficient building because it had 170, 117 apartments, so the heating cost per unit would be a lot different than like a two-family.
Right.
So I just wondered how much of a breakdown you did.
So it's really going to depend on the responses we get back, because what we're trying to establish is a typical market rent for a typical, you know, class of property. So we're probably going to find out a lot of variability. Karen spoke to her earlier about how the expenses for, you know, the two to fours are going to be different than the, you know, 12 and ups. So it's really now, we're, we're, we're collecting the data. We haven't even really started to process it because we want to see what we get in first, because we could, we could start down a rabbit hole and, and, and find out that we're analyzing the wrong information. So we're, we're going to collect the body of work, and then we're going to kind of determine what the scope of work is to take it apart, deconstruct it. But the ultimate goal is to find what are, what's typical for this size of property, you know, the, the management for this type of, you know, owner, or if you will. So there, there are some different factors to consider, and we don't have all the information yet. That's, that's why we undertook this.
Any other questions from the council? So I might, yeah, so before you move on to the farm piece, I might suggest after you do your analysis, if you could come back to the council and let them know on what cyclical basis you think you might be repeating this, I think, to follow up on what Council Walker was talking about. I think that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yep. Okay, so we, the farm income verification letters, totally separate, this is totally different. We have about 47, I'm going to say, could be a few more taxpayers that have their parcels in the farmland special land use classification. It's a tax program. And every five years, by statute, anybody in this program is required to report their farm income to the assessing office. That is for the purpose of, we need to make sure that they're meeting their $2,000 per year from their farm products to remain in the program. So we have been doing this ever since I've been here, so in excess of 20 years. Every five years, they go out. We sent this year's, and we only had, we had less than a dozen this year that were due. They stagger, obviously, because people come and go, and, well, they don't go as often as they come, but they enter the farmland program all at different times. So obviously, their five-year increments are all different and staggered. So we review the applications every single year. We have a spreadsheet, and it says, okay, these people are due this year. We sent them out, and most of our taxpayers and property owners that are in this program expect them. They know they're coming, and we have had no problems or issues at all receiving the information that we need from these letters that went out.
Any questions from the council on this item?
Okay, I'm going to add a few. Can I? Because we sent out more letters, and I want you to be aware, because I'll, I'll just buzz. Watershed septic, we all know that the ordinance was changed for septic requirements. So we went through and checked all of the parcels of land that we were formally assessing as miscellaneous, non-buildable land. I worked with the planning department to exclude any other requirements, and based on what we found, there were nine properties in the watershed that are potentially now buildable lots based on this new ordinance. I have sent them all letters to inform them that we, unless we are provided something to the contrary, we are going to be considering these as buildable lots for the upcoming tax year, and we will send out valuation notices once we have our values finalized before tax commitment, because they're going to see a substantial increase in the valuation of their property. So those letters have gone out as well. And our, our last is we're starting our business canvas. Personal property is upon us. We are starting this week out in the, out in the, in the city. We canvass all, well, we canvass the major corridors, all the new businesses. We will be out there, so if people see us out and about, or you get calls about us coming to their business, explaining personal property, getting information so that we can send out our packets in March, that's what that's all about. That generates a few phone calls every year. That's it on, on the letters that we've sent out.
Yeah, so the, the canvas involves us checking for new businesses, seeing ones that have closed, and maybe updating information on businesses. We also send a mailing to these same business owners every year. This is something that's routine. This is one of our routine functions. We're entering what we call personal property season, which is our least favorite time of the year, to be, to be frank, where we get asset lists from business owners to assess those. And while we're in public, in a public forum, I, I guess kind of want to advertise that there are tax relief programs for property owners. Not every property owner takes advantage of them. Many more could. One is called the Business Equipment Tax Exemption. It's a state-funded program. Many programs, many businesses are eligible for this. There's also a refund program for those that aren't. It's called BETTER, the Business Equipment Tax, or Business Equipment Tax Refund Program. So after you've paid your taxes, you can get a refund from the state. It's all very labor-intensive. We, we really wish the state would simplify the code a little bit, but those are programs that we try to promote this time of year when we're doing it. Personal property season is pretty important, because in order to get to commitment, we have to get through personal property season, so we have our numbers. So we're working really hard this time of year to get that done.
And of course, the revale. We still have that. So we're working on the RFP, should be ready by the end of the week or next week to send over and review, and we'll see where, where your direction is for that. That'll be on an update.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, Council Wything?
This may be a Phil question, but I'm curious as to what the legislature is doing in terms of the, remember they had that tax cap for seniors, and then they backed off, but the, the, the discussion was that there would be some sort of change in the exemption for, I forget what you call it, but...
We, we have a lot of opinions about this. We think that one of the problems with the property tax stabilization program is it wasn't very clear. Seniors were signing up and really not sure what they were getting out of it. It wasn't very equitable. It wasn't, there wasn't a uniform benefit for seniors, and it wasn't funded, as, as it turns out. So they, they recently had to approve in their, their fast-tracking legislation to approve the shortfall in funding. One of the benefits in Auburn is that we were fairly flat that particular year. So most of our, our, our single-family properties didn't raise in value, so we, we didn't, we didn't lose out on a, to the tune of $500,000, so, which isn't chump change, obviously. They haven't brought forward an alternative. There've been discussions about doing that. I don't know that there, there are any credible ones out there. I have lots of recommendations if the legislature wants to listen to me, so.
Yeah, and I, and so the, the amount that was owed to the municipalities was only 55% of the total that was owed for the rebate. The balance is in the appropriations committee. It's on the table, and I don't remember the date. The hearing's either this week, is it this week? And, and compared to most cities, we're in a much better position. The city manager didn't book that revenue into the budget, and the amount's a lot smaller for us, so we'll say we, we may get a small amount back, depending on what the appropriations committee funds.
After I'm finished here, but it's an important step and it's one that is often overlooked by survivors. Particularly if you're an individual, a homeowner or a renter. You might think, well, I'm not a small business. Why am I being encouraged to apply for a small business loan? And the, the answer is there's a tremendous resource that may be available to survivors. We want them to be able to apply for a Small Business Administration loan for, for making themselves whole, for going above and beyond what FEMA assistance might be able to offer. If you're not eligible for, for a Small Business Administration loan, that's fine. You get referred back to FEMA for your personal property, for your moving, storage, transportation. So it's an important step. A lot of people, unfortunately, they don't understand what it's for and they, they may leave FEMA assistance on the table. A couple of things that we're starting to see at this point, we're now two and change weeks in. Some of the good news is we've had over $2.5 million that's gone out to residents of Maine who were impacted. So that's a lot of money. We still have a long way to go, but it's been a good start to getting assistance out there. We're also seeing determination letters. So if someone has registered, they've gone through the inspection process and they get correspondence back from FEMA, either to their email or mail to them that says, yes, you're eligible for assistance. Here's the breakdown of what's eligible or no, you're not eligible and here are the reasons and here's the way to, to overcome that. Certainly getting a letter that says you're not eligible for assistance can be very frustrating. It can be confusing as to what your next steps are, what your options are. For any survivor who, you know, has questions about it, I'd encourage them to call the helpline, the 1-800-621-3362. Go into a disaster recovery center and sit down face to face with one of our FEMA representatives to explain what to do. There are very few hard stops to the assistance. Frequently it's just a function of, we need additional information. We need a copy of your driver's license, maybe a lease or utility bill for your property. Simple things that can be corrected in order to get your assistance moving forward. Our FEMA folks really are trying to get you to maximize the assistance. We want to get you to yes. So please utilize the folks that are here in the state, in these communities. Ask the questions and let us get you as, as much assistance as we can. So certainly looking forward to any questions that might come up and happy to be here and be able to provide some assistance to those who are impacted. Thank you, and I'll turn to Small Business Administration.
Good evening, council members and citizens of Auburn. Thanks for the opportunity to present this information to you. My name is Brian Beard. I'm a public affairs specialist for the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And as you've heard, we work alongside FEMA after disasters such as the presidential declaration that was made for the flooding in December. We provide low interest, long-term loans to homeowners, renters, businesses and nonprofits that suffered uninsured losses, you know, from the damage. So any damage that occurred from December 17th to 21st in five different counties, including Andrews-Coggan, you know, can be eligible for a loan from us. A lot of people after they've been through a lot and suffered loss of property and damage to their home, they don't want to think about a loan or going into debt, but it's a very low cost option to make you whole again. So whatever damage is not covered by insurance or possible assistance from FEMA or another source, you can get a low interest loan from us. There's no interest or penalty or payments for the first year. So from the first year of dispersal, till the date of dispersment until one year later, there's no cost to you. You don't have to make any payments. After that, most loans are up to a 30-year term. And for homeowners and renters, it's only 2.688%. And for most businesses, it's only 4% and then 3.25% for nonprofits. So for example, a case I heard about in the Panhandle of Florida, that a $24,000 loan with a 30-year term, it was only about $70 a month. So it's very reasonable to cover that damage. And I know here in Maine, a lot of people were not expecting such a large scale flood. So a lot of people did not have flood insurance and are stuck, you know, without that coverage, which is very distressing to them. So even if somebody's already spent, you use their credit card or their savings to fix their homes, get their furnace working again if it was flooded, et cetera. You could still apply for that loan and whatever's not covered by FEMA or insurance, you could get a loan to, to pay off that credit card debt and replace it with a much lower interest rate. So we encourage people to, even if they've already fixed the damage, don't keep that from applying and see what your options are. If you get a loan offer, you have two months to decide whether you want to accept it or not. So we encourage people to apply now and decide later. You can decline that loan offer at no cost to you. So you want to get yourself in the system before the April 1st deadline and make sure you keep your options open. As I said, the, the loan can be up to a 30-year term. And in addition to the loan that you can get for the damage, you can also request an additional 20% of the total estimated damage to use for mitigation to prevent future damage. You could use that to get a sump pump or change retaining wall or change in the landscaping to try to prevent future floodwater coming into your basement or even use it to elevate your water heater or your furnace a few feet off the ground. So it's less likely to get flooded out the next time. So we encourage people to, you know, make use of that. Up to $25,000 loans, there is no collateral requirement. So you don't need to put a lien on your home or business in order to get that loan. Some people decide to just get that 25,000, even if their damage is a little bit more than that. The maximum amounts for the loans are 500,000 for the home and for homeowners and renters, up to 100,000 for personal property. And then businesses can have up to 200, I mean, 2 million total for physical damage mitigation and also economic injury. So even if a business did not have any physical damage at all, they could still get a working capital loan. We call an economic injury disaster loan to provide working capital to cover monthly expenses until they get their business up and running again. So there's a lot of different, different options for those loans. Sam had mentioned about, you know, some people might be referred to the SBA for a loan. So as you know, FEMA focuses on making sure the home is safe and secure to live in. But for the personal property aspect of that, if their income is over a certain amount, they might get a letter saying they've been referred to the SBA for a loan. But it's very important to follow through on that. Go ahead and apply at no cost for that loan. If you get a loan offer, you have two months to decide. But if your loan gets declined after being referred from FEMA, then you may be referred back to FEMA for additional assistance for personal property damage to make your home functional again. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't cover like insurance would, but to make your home safe and secure to live in. So the, for the economic injury disaster loans, the deadline is not till October 30th because we want business owners to have enough time to recover and know how long it's going to take before their business gets back up to speed. But it's a 60-day window for the, both registration for FEMA and for applying for an SBA loan. So the deadline for that is April 1st. So we want, you know, enlist all of you to let your constituents know about that and to, you know, if you, and as Sam also mentioned, if you get declined or if, in the case of SBA, you might get a letter saying you were put into withdrawn status. But that probably just means that we're missing some paperwork from you. Like there's a certain form you have to fill out to give us permission to get a copy of your tax return from the IRS so that we can assess your ability to repay the loan. And so if you get put into withdrawn status or get a decline letter, they should not give up. You know, read the letter carefully, call our 800 number at 800-659-2955. Or you could write to Disaster Customer Service at sba.gov. But the best way is to come to one of our disaster recovery centers such as at the Lewiston Armory, where people are there from seven days a week, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, both FEMA and SBA. And you can get all your questions answered and find out about your own specific situation, what you need to turn that no to a yes. So thank you very much for your time and, you know, any questions or, you know, I'll make myself available and give you all my contact information so that, you know, we can answer any questions any of your constituents may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? No, thank you very much. The next item will be the innovation designation. It was item E from the workshop that we did not have time to cover. Mr. Brencheck, Mr. Cousins and Mr. Holmes will present on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be patient, I'm getting there. Okay, this was a workshop, but I appreciate you making time during, during this meeting to hear from us. The state of Maine has received the designation of a tech hub for bio forest prod products. There are 31 tech hubs around the country and they range from pharmaceuticals to transportation, to wind energy. In the case of the state of Maine, we, we got the tech hub designation of bio forest products. And we got that for a few reasons. One is the state has already identified forest products as a key industry. The other is that one of our foremost composites programs in the world is actually at the University of Maine. And we're very fortunate to have them there. They're doing composites with, with wood byproducts. Right now, most composites are actually a petroleum-based composite. And that's really not great for the environment as, as it breaks down or if it gets burnt or, or those things. What they're doing at the University of Maine is developing composites that are plant-based. And it's a celiac that's within the plant that allows for this binding agent to happen. So the, the idea with this program isn't to optimize the number of trees that are cut down in the state. It's to actually optimize how each tree is, is being used. So as we, the next phase in these designations is there's about $500 million available in grant dollars for the states to apply for. And so that's the, the phase two application that's going. That's, I think they have until the end of this month to get their application in. In the meantime, though, the city of Auburn, we need to position ourselves so that we can work with the University of Maine, we can work with the RU Institute, we can work with Maine Technology Institute. Those are all the players that are, are doing this application. And the best way we can do that is by declaring an innovation tech hub designation for our city. And the area we're proposing is right around Exit 75 and the airport area. And so what does this tech hub mean? We need to take a look at our zoning and make sure that either, either our zoning allows for the processes to happen or that once we've seen what the processes are, we, we know we don't want to have certain things happen in certain areas. One area, we, we have not drawn the definitive line as to where we want this zone to be. And that's going to really rely heavily on, on Eric and his team. But very specifically, we want to be near Exit 75. We do have prospects that are interested in the Auburn Business Center, who are composite-based businesses. So we need to make this adjustment. Right now, the Auburn Commerce Center is zoned general business. And in general business, you can do light industrial, but you can't do all the various industrials. As you point out, that the composites with them being plant-based is a very clean industry. But we want to make sure that the city is, is positioned. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that we're speaking the same language as these folks that are in the tech industry. So we need to take a look at our incentives. We primarily use tax increment financing because that's where our, our dollars come from is real estate taxes. But we need to lay on top of that a incentive program that utilizes those dollars, still follows what the requirements are for tax increment financing, but makes it a lot easier for a company to be able to say, okay, I'm doing composites. I'm going to have a capital investment of $50 million, you know, a few other criteria. I may qualify and be eligible for these incentives. All of this also works to be a great marketing tool for us because we'll be the first municipality in the state that's received this tech hub designation to actually declare a tech hub as well. So that our, our zoning, our marketing and our incentives are all in line. So the purpose of the workshop or, or this presentation, there's no action for you to take at this point in time. It's to inform you that we're looking at this and that in the coming weeks, we'll be coming to you and the planning board with, with what our ideas are. But it's also to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions at this time? Council Platts?
I've got one question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay, for presenting that. If this all plays out, when it comes time to apply for federal monies, are municipalities applying for that and passing it down to businesses? Or are businesses applying directly for those monies?
So the, at the Economic Development Administration is the one who would be, has the funding. Each state applies, in this state, it's being applied for through the Maine Technology Institute. So if we get these dollars, then they would be the ones to administer the grants out. And so companies and possibly municipalities would apply to them for, for the dollars.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, excuse me, the next agenda item is the first open session of the night. Any members of the public that would like to present to the council on any issue related to city business, but not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close the open session. There's no agenda items under unfinished business tonight. Does the council have any unfinished business? Not seeing any, we'll move on to new business. The first item is a public hearing related to CDBG and Home Consortium Action Plan for the Program Year 2024. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you. This, this public hearing is the kickoff to the season to create all the planning for the CDBG program for the upcoming year. So what we're looking for, before we're allowed to put our plan into the field, we need to collect through a survey as well as through public hearing, ideas that the community has so we can put that together so that we're not putting our ideas out and leading anybody in any direction. So if anybody has anything they'd like to bring to the table, now's the time. More please fill out the surveys that have been out there for a couple of weeks now.
Yeah, I had a couple inquiries from the public about the survey. Is, is the survey that was sent out something that's created by Auburn city staff? Or is this something that's in alignment with CDBG and home surveys that take place elsewhere?
So the surveys are created locally, but they're passed through a process through the, through HUD.
Great, so the information that's being collected is in alignment with what's required by HUD?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment regarding to the CDBG and Home Consortium Action Plan for the year 2024? If so, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the second open session of the night. Any members of the public that would like to address the council about issues related to city business that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Mark Butler, I'm from Gloucester. I don't know if this is the right meeting or we should have been at the one that was broadcast while we were sitting here waiting for you guys, but there's a bunch of us apartment owners here and we weren't too happy with the letter that he sent out to us. And specifically, there's one that asked for all our tenants' information. And I talked to a lawyer and he said, don't give it. He said, there's all kinds of HIPAA rules and everything else that we need to abide by. And the state legislature has been trying to pass all kinds of laws that we can't look into information for a tenant, on a tenant. But yet you guys are asking us for information that we don't feel that we should be giving out. If the tenant wants to give it out to you, that's fine, but we don't feel that we should. And the way the letter was sent out, you know, I talked to the assessor Karen there, I guess it was. And she said, well, it's not mandatory. Well, it might not be mandatory, but the letter wasn't too friendly, I didn't think. And it was more or less telling us we had to do it. And the other, the second thing is, as far as reporting on our income and our expenses to the city, she's trying to come up with a formula, say 30%. Everybody's expense ratio should be 30% of their income or whatever else. And that's what they're gonna, then they're gonna look at how much you're making. And she, she told me that she's not, they're not going to raise the value of our building. Well, why are you spending all this money and time collecting that information and going through it if you're not planning on using it to try to raise the taxes? And we keep, they keep talking about affordable housing. And every time you raise our taxes, we're going to raise our rent. So you might want to think about that. And they, they want to treat us like a business, but they don't want to give us the advantages of a business. There's a lot of, if, there's a lot of advantages a business has dealing with the public that we don't have. But yet we, they keep wanting to treat us like a business, you know? And, you know, I just, they keep raising, if they keep raising, keep raising that cost up, we're just gonna, a lot of people are gonna fold. They're not gonna, because right now, we haven't had, people haven't had time to be in the rent. And if we keep going up on our, on our, on our rent because expenses keep going up, something's going to give. That's what I'll get to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to address the council, please come forward, provide your name and address.
Hi, my name is Tammy Dumay, part of Coney Property Management. We own multifamilies around the state with some including in Auburn. We wrote a letter here and if you're okay with it, I'd like to read that to you. Dear City of Auburn councilors, we are writing in regard to the City of Auburn's recent request for information on multifamily buildings to assist in assessing the valuation. We understand there are three approaches to valuation of property. One being the market approach, two, the cost approach, and three, income approach. The income approach, as taught by the State of Maine Revenue Services, is based upon income equals rate times value. Income being the estimated income generated by the property, rate being the capitalization rate or the rate of return for income-producing property and value being the current market value of the property. The city references Title 36706-A in its mailing, which states, "For the purposes of this section, proprietary information means information that is a trade secret or production, commercial or financial information, the disclosure of which would impair the competitive position of the person submitting the information and would make available information not otherwise publicly available and information protected from disclosure by federal or state law, rules or regulations." We are concluding the city is citing this title in reference to the request of tenant names, start dates and rent rolls. As mentioned above, there are three approaches to valuation of property. One, market approach, two, cost approach, three, income approach. None of these approaches require tenant names, start dates or rent rolls. We feel sharing the names, start dates of tenants in our rent rolls is a breach of confidentiality and over and above the pertinent and necessary information to conduct a thorough and accurate assessment. Best regards, Coney Property Management.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to address the council? Please come forward and provide your name and address.
Good evening. Donald Poison, 207 Shakona Avenue. We also own some properties. We've owned them for quite a few years. We've kept our rent way under market value. Everybody's always complaining about how expensive the housing is. Of course, if I pay more taxes, I've got to raise my rents. Some people tell us we're crazy on some of the rents that we charge. We still have some two bedrooms that are $600. We usually don't raise any rents until they move out. So $600 for a two-bedroom apartment, who's going to move? If they do, they're stupid. Also, if these letters are sent out, is Auburn housing under the same rules as we are? Are they going to pay their fair taxes on what they make? I can't get any straight information on that because in lieu of taxes, they pay a certain amount what they think is due. I don't think that's fair to the rest of us because I don't have that advantage that they do. Let's see. So I listened to the session when you guys were in executive from here and it sounds like you're going to tax us on how much money we make. So should I raise my rents now or wait until after you guys raise my taxes and then raise the rent so I can bypass that for a while? We try to keep our apartments clean, we try to keep it rented. And my tenants, if they have a complaint, we take care of it ASAP. And that's it. Thank you very much for hearing from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Relative to the question that was posed by the public on the Auburn Housing Authority taxation, Council Whiting, do you have?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for the comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to point out that last I knew, and I haven't worked there for four years, three years, Auburn Housing Authority was one of the top 20 taxpayers in the city. Some properties pay full taxes, some pay a payment in lieu on a formula. And the public housing is prescribed by federal law. And in exchange, it has deeply subsidized housing with very severe rent and income restrictions that hamper the housing authority's ability to actually maintain their buildings in some cases. But it's, it's a popular misconception that Auburn Housing Authority doesn't pay taxes. It's one of the top taxpayers in the city.
Dan Herrick, 470 Hatchfield, Auburn. I have to reiterate about Don Poisson. I manage apartment buildings also. I hadn't gone up on my rents over six years. And you read the paper where these affordable houses are $14, $18, $2200 a month. Well, that scares the living daylights out of the tenant that's paying $800, $900 a month. Two, three bedroom, heated rents. Everything's paid except their electricity. So I went up on their rents, $200 a month. Scared the living daylights out of them. They could, they could hardly afford it. I need to hear it there. My question is, what initiated this letter? What ignited it? Because no one ever got one of these before. And here we are disrupting good people in this city that are trying to survive and strive to do the right thing for their landlords and their tenants. And here we are sending out a letter that somebody wanted an abatement? I'm not stupid. I don't think a lot of the city citizens of Auburn are stupid. Something initiated this to go out. And I think it'd be real honest if someone in this council or this city would say, why we initiated this letter to get turned out? I didn't understand the farm letter. I didn't receive one. Now I put my land in the family trust. I was never told to my knowledge that every five years I was going to be... I was never told, to my knowledge, that every five years, I was gonna be asked my income. If that was true, I would have never done it. But my thing is, is there's something that's not being told, that the public should know about why this letter went out. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the council?
Andy Titus, Twenty-four Ruble Light Lane. I'm not a landlord in the area, but I did have a chance to see that letter, and I think I was a little disturbed, because in my direct collection, it clearly said that it was due by a certain date, but then we hear tonight in workshop that, well, really, it isn't something mandatory. So that misunderstanding is really a big deal. But I want to talk more about the broader idea of taxation and revales, and how we determine value, because I, I started getting involved in city business back in two thousand and six, when we had a revale that caused a big stir in the city. And we also, after that, invested on software for our computer system and using market data so that we couldn't ever have to have that surprise ever again. Now we're talking about doing it again for a revale that would go into effect in two thousand and twenty-nine. Who knows what that's gonna do? And I, I also wonder, I look at our sister city across the river, and they haven't done a revale in many, many years. The last one they did was fifteen, twenty years ago, and they didn't apply it. They're looking at doing one finally, but my question is, are they being punished by the state? Because we're told we have to maintain ninety-five or ninety-eight percent valuation, or we lose federal revenue, I mean, state revenue sharing or aid to education. And yet, here's a city across the area that has not done that for many years, and they're at seventy-three or four percent right now, and have been for a long time. They're thinking about doing a revale, but that's gonna take several years, and who knows, at the very end, they might not apply it. So we spent a lot of money and aggravation trying to stay at a hundred percent. Do we have to? This needs to be looked at, because I'm not sure this is causing a lot of, a lot of problems in the city in terms of worry, what's gonna happen next. Thank you.
Any other member of the public that would like to come forward to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the second open session, and we'll move on to report. A couple of quick items for the mayor's report. The Auburn Water District Board of Trustees Meeting will be tomorrow afternoon at four P M. at the Water District Office off Court Street. And for those members of the public that want to follow the budget process with the council, in addition to the regular meetings on March Fourth, March Eighteenth, and April First, there will also be budget workshop meetings on March Eleventh and March Twenty-Fifth. So every Monday through that period, we'll be working budget. I don't have anything else. We'll start with council reports. Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Officially, I have none to report, but I did go to the fundraiser at, in behalf of the Powell Center, over to Bird Inns, which was very well-attended, which was wicked cool, and the food was excellent.
Counsel Whiting?
Just congratulations to the ski teams and swim team. I think we had a second-place finish in the state meet for swimming and boys. Ski team was second, and I'm not sure about girls, but we had two top ten finishers.
Counsel Cowan?
Nothing to report tonight?
Counsel Eifert?
Yes, this coming Thursday, there's gonna be a nine-one-one committee meeting here in City Hall, eight A M., for those that are interested and want to attend and learn more about that. Just one quick thing, thoughts go out to one of our own Auburn, Andrews-Coggan County sheriff that was injured in the, in the shooting that happened, so my thoughts and prayers go out to him as he heals from that experience.
Thank you. Counsel Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a meeting at Rooly's Diner, February Twenty-Seventh, at six o'clock. I've asked Phil if he would come down to be our speaker. He's gonna be talking about the budget, so if you can attend, please do that. And then we also have a Neighborhood Watch Meet in February Twenty-Ninth, six o'clock, Sixth Street Congregational Church. Lieutenant Harrington is the speaker, so please come on out.
Counsel Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of updates from the school committee side of things. Last week, there was a finance subcommittee meeting, and among other things, there was just conversation of the school committee's continued efforts to transition to Munis accounting software. Just something the council should know, the school committee is getting aligned with the city's accounting software, so that's a big move for them. Also, the superintendent search is underway. The, let's see, the first meeting was held on February Thirteenth, and they have named the search committee. You can find that on their website, so the superintendent's search committee is posted on the school committee's website. And lastly, as the mayor mentioned, for the city council's budget process, the school committee's budget process is beginning as well. And at our next meeting, next Wednesday, I believe will be the first budget presentation pursuant to the school committee, ah, sorry, the school department. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, just a couple of updates first regarding the ad hoc committees and the special work groups that we have. If if people are interested in following those, we have a staff member that's been working on ensuring that all minutes, agendas, dates are posted on the website. Really encourage you to go to the Committee, Boards and Committees tab within the website. From there, you'll see the special or short-term committees or ad hoc committees to follow the work that's being done there. We'll do our, our best to ensure that that's always posted on the calendar as we move forward. Also regarding the website, the team has been doing interviews with different vendors for our, our new website platform. That is underway. There's several things that we're looking at, so if you're on the website, and you're used to going certain pages, and you might see some adjustments, what we're doing is trying to clean up some of the, the old information, make sure that this new information, as we migrate that to a new, a new platform, we want to ensure that we're not bringing any old data crossed, and so that work is underway. So it may look different as you're on the website. If there's something that you can't find, if it's pertaining to a certain department, that all the contact information is up to date, encourage you to reach out to that director or contact the information desk, and they'll assist you in getting that. Thanks.
That will be all of the council business. There's two executive sessions. I would note, on the first executive session, it's noted as possible action to follow. For the public, there will be no action to follow tonight. The council will be going into executive session, and then directly to adjournment, with no other public business to follow. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session for economic development pursuant to one MRSA, Section Four Oh Five Six C?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Counsel Cowan, seconded by Counsel Platt. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor, opposed. Five having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, and one voting that's absent from the room. We are now in executive session.